And so just the agenda?
Uh, no.
Were we gonna carry over those, yes, looks like the 20th?
So is policy?
Yeah.
We're gonna table them and tell them, okay.
But we will be moving forward with 509, correct?
509 is really the only one that we can...
Okay, the only one we can finish up tonight?
Yep.
So tabling of those three.
When we come back on the 24th, hopefully we can hit those. And the other one that we want to be able to hit is that staff development one on procedures. So we're starting some of the personnel today. We need to get that staff development committee together so they can work on the procedures. And that meeting before the policy committee meets. So those recommendations, be ready.
Okay.
Looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
All of the favors say aye?
Aye.
Same sign? No comments? Nothing? Thank you for being here today. Moving on to 6.1, early childhood report, Roseanne.
You guys will take a poll out and know what's happening. Classes started today, first day of school readiness. I have just a type-up of each of the classes and then our numbers in each state's numbers of kids on IEPs in each of the, in the different programs as well. So I'll just kind of summarize with each of the different sections. And I also quote the top, the age-wise. So like school readiness fours by September 1st, TOTS are three by September 1st. Dilworth State, we are full for school readiness in our fours. And this is that class that we went forward with increasing from two half-days to those three half-days. Had great response from the parents. They're very, very, very excited to have the opportunity to send their kids three half-days instead of those two half-days. So we are full here at Dilworth with 40 students, 20 in each class. Nine special education students receiving services in that school readiness class with one additional one being evaluated. At our Glendon Felton site, we have our two sections as well with 33 students. So we still have seven openings. So it's nice that we still have some openings for fours for families in the district if they're moving in mid-year or we find students who need those special services to provide those special education services in our program. And eight students with, eight special education students with one being evaluated. Then our TOTS classes, those are those kids who are three by September 1st. At our Dilworth site, we have 25 students enrolled who go up to 28. So we have three spots open. We have 12 special education students receiving services and one additional one being evaluated. So of those 25 kids, 13 of them are on IEPs for special education services. A very, very high number that we've seen in Dilworth, especially at that site, at our, within one class. My morning TOTS class that I'll be teaching Wednesdays and Fridays, we have eight children on IEPs. Yeah, 10 of them are, 10 of those 14 children in that class are boys. No, 11 are boys, three are girls. So it's just, it's very staggering to the number of children on IEPs this year in our program. At the TOTS site, not at, I mean, just one class, so, but still not as many. We have five, five students receiving special education services at our TOTS class in Glendon and we are full with 14. So it is nice, we do have a few open available spots for threes at our Dilworth site and a few spots for our fours and our school readiness at Glendon Felton site. So anyone coming into the district would still have opportunity to enroll. They would just not have a choice at which site. So right now, currently feeling comfortable with the number of sections we're able to offer. Last year, we did offer two sections of our threes group at Glendon Felton site. This year, we only do have one section. Don't know if there was a boom of threes that year or what it was with how many threes we had last year 'cause as both sites had high numbers last year in that threes group. And then just, just to put all those numbers together, those special education students that we're servicing in our programs, we ended the year last year with 33 kids on receiving special education services. Six of those 33 started mid-year. They were kids that we didn't know about that mid-year either through doctors referrals, parent referrals, daycare referrals, or ourselves as teachers in the classroom noticing that there are some issues with students that, that need some evaluations. So ending with 33 last year, starting with 34 this year. Three are already being tested, which I'm pretty sure all three will qualify. So 37 students starting the year with on IEPs is quite staggering. I know Carrie Krebs and I have been having some conversations about where are all these numbers? Why are our numbers keeping increasing? One, are we being better at identifying kids that have those high needs? Are doctors referring to districts more easily recognizing some of those autism concerns? They're doing more checklists at those well visits for families? Daycare providers knowing, being more educated about what developmental milestones these kids should be reaching? Parents actually reaching out for help for their concerns about their child, not talking. Maybe the child's two years old and has maybe five years, five words in his or her vocabulary. We're kind of thinking it's a combination of just parents, daycare providers, doctors, teachers just being more aware of those developmental milestones and sending those kids our way. So happy we're here to be able to provide those services, but wow, we are really stretching our, our early childhood special ed teachers very, very thin. And speech as well, because I believe and with my class in the morning that has eight kids on IEPs, I think all of them are receiving speech services. Four of them are speech only, but the other four that are not are speech services along with Carrie Krebs for developmental delays or Darla Hen and with some fine motor things as well. So just really high needs that we're seeing in our program. On the next page, I just wanted to list out our different ECFE classes. And I did attach a flyer on the back page of our different classes that we're offering this fall. We're offering two different nighttime classes and a daytime class going at both sites. One, our evening class at our Dilworth site will be Thursdays. Our evening class at the Glendon Felton site will be Tuesdays. And a daytime at Glendon Felton site on Wednesday, since we have that open space, since we don't have that afternoon three-year-old TOTS program. Trying to offer it, we haven't been able to run a daytime ECFE. The reality is parents are working, kids are in daycare. There aren't a lot of families looking for those parent-child daytime classes, but we still want to offer it. So if we get enough people, we would love to be able to run that class. And also, we started this past spring of offering just a one-time class. So if parents are not sure what ECFE is, what our classes are like, wanting to offer just a one-time class so that they're not tied down to a whole six-week class or a five-week class. So we have our first one slated to start in October called Pumpkin Spiders and Bats O' Y. So we'll be running that right before the Halloween time with some fun fall-themed activities for the kids. Screening, we screened 50 children last week with our early childhood screenings with our teachers and myself. Looking to do another day of screening, probably a late afternoon, evening screening in Gen, in like February. Wanting to be able to offer that to parents who are working and unable to get off of work during the day so that they have some late afternoon, early, early evening screening times. Plus I'll be offering those individual appointments that I can do screenings for each of those kids as, as needed on Monday, Tuesdays or Thursdays. We love that teaching on Wednesdays or Fridays. And pumpkin patch, our annual pumpkin patch field trip is scheduled for October 8th. We'll be starting registration next week with flyers going home and all.
Yeah, I like this one-time class, Roseanne. I think that's a great idea to introduce people to the program, programming you guys have.
And last spring, it was a lot of the families that did register for it were families that were in that Thursday night or that, that Monday night, other ECFE class. But they just, they enjoy it so much they, they want a more.
Yeah, awesome.
We don't have a lot of registrations for that yet, but that class doesn't, one is I believe October 22nd and the other one is the 26th, so.
Great idea.
Long time, so yeah. And the state came out with very nice templates. So all ECFE, school readiness will be having, have these templates available. So we can just pop a picture, pop in classes, change colors. And then they have, actually have a staple logo that they want us using on our items. It was like when we were at the conferences spring, it was a nice, nice welcome to see. So you'll start seeing more of that ECFE and there's a school. The ECFE one, as you notice, the people around ECFE are both sizes. So the smaller ones are the children and then the adults. Whereas our school readiness are more preschool classes will be all just the children. That's what's within that preschool.
Thank you, Roseanne.
What was ever purchased with that?
I am picking up light tables for each classroom, Sandy, at the end of September. The $500 that Sandy had donated to us. I've been waiting because I want to get a picture of them in the classroom. I ordered them in July and when I was down in July was going to pick them up and the person that makes them out of Shaka Pete, all of a sudden calls me, he's like, "I'm sorry to tell you, I thought I had two on my garage, I only have one." So I'm making, so I'm making another trip down to the, down to the city's end of September. So yes, I'm planning to send you a couple pictures. All the teachers were really excited to add those light tables into the classroom. And this gentleman was at my leadership conference I go to for coordinators in St. Paul every April and he was there with light tables. His light tables he sells, he makes are $250 each, so perfect for that $500 donation. Whereas in the catalogs like Light Shore and some of the other constructor, constructor plate things, they're close to $500 each. So we could stretch it and get two for that price of almost one through those other places. And it has remote controls, it has different light colors, we can change it. Very, very fun. It's nice to have that addition for classroom.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roseanne.
6.2, food service.
And I do a flip-flop.
Okay.
We had transportation. Eileen was able to come in, meet with operations. So give a little bit of a report from the operations committee and then have food service come in at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, so we'll look for 6.3, board committee reports. And Raleigh, were you doing that one?
Well, we had operation meeting tonight. Probably the biggest thing on it was the, we discussed hiring basically a full-time grounds maintenance for the Glendon site. We've got Ryan, but he spends all of his time, or most of his time on events, which as we know, when the wintertime hits and even the fall hits, he doesn't have time to take care of it. In the summer, the same thing. We just, community ed's been doing it kind of. Dilworth is pretty straightened out, but it's just, we're short. We're short one guy. And honestly, I've been over to the softball fields twice and sprayed roundup on the infield's 'cause now they're turning green. We just don't have enough bodies or time to keep things squared away.
I know Boyd's been doing that too in the summer.
So that was probably the biggest thing we talked, we talked about capital improvements possible for next year. Quite a list of things and I think if we just bring it up, get it on the list, whether or not it happens, it happens. If it doesn't, it doesn't. We should just need to get them on the list. One of them was adding on to the current car van building that we have by the football field to try and get some of that stuff. And I was, I've been giving Joe a little grief about if we're gonna have a track meet this fall because the porta pitts sat outside all summer. They did get them up before the football game, but they just have no room. We have no room. Well, vehicles parked outside and I think we signed a bill last year for about $700 for a little rodent who decided he really liked wires. Not that they couldn't get into, into the building either, but you know, we've got cold vehicles. We talked about possibly a, a building here for vehicles 'cause as we know, by drive-by on the weekend, the school pickup is sitting out front crossways in the driveway off the street. So we've talked about a lot of things, but that stuff will come up on the list. More than anything, it was the addition of a, an employee grounds maintenance assistant at the Glendon site, which we are short a body, we knew it. So.
We'll put that on the agenda for the 24th. That way at least we got operations that can talk about it first.
And the transportation piece, as far as Eileen was concerned, was just discussing about, it's going well so far. They took away all those fifth grade buses and they've just made it so that they're all regular shuttle buses. And that's taken a huge load off of the afternoon shuttles. There's eight buses in Dilworth in the afternoons and so that's kind of a lot. But what they'd like to do is, there are three parking spaces from the gym, corner of the gym, just to the south there, and they're gonna take that.
You're typing here?
In Dilworth, yes. And then change that into just strictly busing parking to keep it safer for the kids. So those three spots will be removed and Brian's in talks with the city of Dilworth to get a sign made. That should happen soon and they will send out an instant alert to inform the DGF community and just an internal email through DGF so staff knows, so.
Anything else?
I just have one more thing to add. I went to, this isn't necessarily a committee report, but I went to the safety and security piece that Jeff Lee had held on August 23rd at the Glendon School and I thought it was great. I wished, you know, since that's such a huge issue for DGF, the safety and security, that more people would have come. I think there were 12 parents there. So it was kind of disappointing, but Jeff did a great job. Margot was there to answer any questions that parents may have had. But they went through, you know, different types of lockdowns that our kids may experience throughout a day, whether it be a soft, a medical lockdown, how many fire drills they do, tornado drills, lockdown drills that they do in a year's time and how they inform the kids of when these are gonna happen. I thought it was great, a lot of good information. Jeff did a great job and yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge that.
You did good. All right, moving on to 6.4, superintendent report.
So just a few things sent out over the weekend or Friday, whenever it was, to the board on. Was there any feedback on any of those topics? They put out that email, there was quite a few. Nothing, nothing major on that? Okay. The one thing I just handed everybody was levy sheets. But I will tell you, remember these levy sheets during, during September. These get updated probably every three or four days. Okay, so this is just the early one. I know that this one will end up being definitely updated. There's some information that has to be entered into EDRS now that we've got more of an idea on our enrollment. If you look at that first page, line number 56 in the lower right on the adjusted pupil units, you know, it's showing 1815 adjusted pupil units or WOTMs as, as they're called with the weighted. This is really the weighted amount. I can tell you for a fact that 1815 is definitely a higher number than we actually have. So I'm gonna also hand out, and you can see how much influx the, the enrollment has been more than any other year, our open enrollment numbers and our people that are wanting to come in for open enrollment to our district. Just today, I had six more, which is highly unusual on the second week of school. But six more. And so again, what we do based on the new policy, which by the way, is going to the ratios was so critical because what it allows us to do is say, all right, at the kindergarten level, how many kids do we have in each of the classrooms? Knowing that we can't, we don't want to go over those, those numbers. So our priority's 19 and 18. If we have classrooms that have only 18 and it's a tier one, well then there's a spot that's available. We had two that opened up on Friday based on, once we had our, our numbers of the kids that actually came in the kindergarten last week, because the first day was Thursday. And so then we, we knew we had some spots that opened. But these are the numbers as of today with enrollment. And you notice that if you look over at the far right at the bottom of the page under the W, the weighted average daily membership, which is another term for the adjusted pupil units on those, on the levy sheets, that line 56. Notice the estimate that the state had for us was 1815. Notice what we have, 1736. So there's gonna be a major change on these levy sheets. As soon as they get that in, once, we have to update it in EDRS. Once they, they run it this week, you'll see these numbers drop on the levy. Because with 60, 70, less, it'll definitely drop the levy amount. Of course, the page that, the other page that everybody likes to go to and to see what exactly happened with our levy is page, one you're gonna want to go to is page 31. Page 31 shows what, in the middle of the page, what the pay limitation would actually be. And you notice that right now it's showing in the middle of the page, percent change, 8.59%. But again, it won't be that much because we got a lot, we've got less pupil units. But don't be shocked that it goes up some because remember, we're getting full implementation on long-term facility maintenance funds now. So that's the biggest other reason that you're gonna see an increase. That's why the general's going up by about 100,000. It won't be that much once we get the pupil units right at the state level. So I will email you, instead of emailing you each time these levy sheets update, you're never gonna be able to keep track of them 'cause it, every day they come in. I won't give you a new one this week until those numbers are right. But this has to be taken care of on the 24th because we have to have the board approve the initial levy by October 1st. So every year, we always have to do this in September. What I would suggest is we're supposed to have a fiscal personnel committee meeting at 5:00 on the 24th. Instead of going over some of this levy with the fiscal personnel, why not just open it for 5:00? We'll go over the levy sheets and any of the board members that can make it, we'll just go through it then. So that we don't have to use the actual meeting time to go through the numbers. We can go through it right there at 5:00, whoever can make it. I'll have the markers and all those fun things. Mr. O'Keefe is actually going, he's in the middle of his finance class right now and he has impressed me greatly on how much work he's doing on this. He is doing a fantastic job and he's gonna actually help with it. So you'll, you'll get to see how, he goes, now I understand why some of this stuff is just, it's boring, but it has to be done that way. So he's getting it. It's just, the finance piece is, anybody who's thinking about going into superintendency is, is just absolutely critical. So if it's okay with all of you, I'll make that change for the 5:00. We'll just do levy sheets and those who can make it, great. But at least that way you'll, you'll have it all in advance. And then whatever questions you happen to have, we can talk about it on the 24th at 5:00. And probably do it right here because we'll, we'll need the space. And if, if people from the public have questions, then they get that, there's an opportunity. I think for us, we can, we can do that, even though it's, it is a committee meeting and there's still, you know, it's not like it's a free-for-all for everybody just to open up for questions. But we could definitely have a set time that if people have questions about the levy in general, instead of people doing it at a board meeting. So, all right, so I'll plan on that. Just some, a few other things. You may, anybody who's a parent that has a son or daughter that's taking the ACT, there was a change in the, the state is still going to pay for the free and reduced on the ACT. They did go to a tiered pricing on the ACT that lowers the cost a little bit based on free and reduced population. So that's a good thing. The cost will go down for, it's not gonna save a lot, but it'll go down a little bit for the rest of the students. And the state picks up the free and reduced cost. So some school districts paid for all of them, they flipped the bill. But seeing that as being less, are starting to do that now that there's a tiered system for it. So it's gonna cost forty-some dollars for each, each of the students to take the ACT. They don't have to take it, but we have to offer it. So Katie Omen is getting that set up. Before we leave tonight, we've gotta figure out, so we've got a few different, and we can do it after the closed session or however the board wants to do. We don't have to do it in the middle of this meeting. But remember, we've gotta accept a policy committee meeting. We need to think about when we're gonna do our negotiations, start that process with transportation vendors and then those administrative contracts. So we've got, and I'm assuming in my email, I just as a reminder, I believe the past history and Sandy, correct me on this one, if, I think it's always been the non-certified negotiations has been the one that's done the transportation negotiations. So that's why I put who's on each of those groups. So we know that we have non-certified negotiations that will have to deal with transportation. We need the certified committee for negotiations to deal with those admin contracts. And any of them that we're gonna get done on the 24th, we just know we have to get those meetings scheduled. We're not gonna be ready for transportation vendor contracts yet, there's no way.
When is the auditor is gonna have the audit in?
Great question. We had some preliminary numbers that cannot be shared yet because all of the transfer between the reserved accounts still have to be taken care of. They still have journal entries that they're going through. They are planning on doing their presentation, the first meeting in October. So at the very least, they gotta have numbers that I can share with the board by the 24th. The numbers that I've seen so far are not, there's no way I would want to put those numbers out because they're way too preliminary and I've seen $300,000 adjustments done from those preliminary numbers before. I don't want that type of a change being put out in public.
So are you thinking in transportation, you wanna wait until those, like after the 24th?
We could, you know, we could either have, make a decision that we could have an initial meeting with them before the 24th if we so wanted. Again, we know what ends up happening. We try to get all these meetings and then it just, there gets to be too many meetings to try to accomplish all this.
I don't, are, Sandy, are we, who's doing transportation?
It would be us again.
Okay. I would just like to wait until the auditor's numbers come in to avoid another meeting.
Yeah.
I guess in case it could swing, you know, within a week time.
I'd be, that would be just fine with me.
Or do they just stay here longer one night to get through it?
The transportation, they're fine with it right now, correct?
Are they, they're understanding waiting for the auditors?
Yeah, the, the last email that I had with was that, no problem, understand. And so I haven't had any, I haven't had any corresponding sense on that.
Yeah.
Because we are trying to push the auditors to get us numbers, but.
Yeah, non-certified.
That is for the transportation, yep. And then it's the, what you wanna do, if you wanna do the same thing on the admin one or that's, it's up to you. We've, we've done all the rest of the personnel.
Yeah.
Raleigh, when are, when are you leaving and when are you gonna be back?
Saturday morning. Don't get back till Friday night.
This Saturday till next Friday?
Yep.
Where are you going again, Raleigh?
Going someplace where it's actually probably warmer here today than there.
Where are you going?
You think I'm gonna blab it all? I'm going to Hawaii to, my wife's cousin is retiring from the Navy after 30 years on submarines. That's a pretty big deal.
That's cool.
So, it doesn't hurt that it's in Hawaii.
I was hearing on the radio today that they did a poll in the 50 states, which is the happiest states. Hawaii was number one.
I need to go there.
Minnesota was number three, North Dakota was number four, and South Dakota was nine. So, the tri-state, we have, are in the top 10 in the nation.
Wow.
To have these places here, I was like, wow.
Really?
I mean, Hawaii is.
I'm assuming they're not taking that poll during, during the blizzard season.
I was thinking they had to be all Norwegian.
It can't, it can't be a February thing.
Oh, it's beautiful out there.
With the fish holes. So, we wait until after the 24th to hit these, which just.
I think so, because then Raleigh will be back. We don't want to try to cram in anything when he's trying to get going and on his trip.
My phone will be on.
Good. That's good, Raleigh.
That's what I say now.
Okay, so after the week of the 24th, we'll get some meetings scheduled.
That sounds good. Like I said, otherwise, enrollment-wise is, is really in flux. It's, we have parents that are setting up to do tours. A family of, of three that is looking at going over to the Glendon site, I think tomorrow. They've got a first grader, a second grader, a sixth grader. And again, we're in the second week of school, but, you know, these calls just keep coming in. This is highly unusual. So, and all we do is we go right back to this.
Maybe talk to Morehead. Is Morehead seeing the same thing, or?
Um, I haven't, I haven't talked to Morehead. The thing is, some of this is, is so to private schools, so, you know, it's, it's interesting. Anyway, so as we get through the week, and we'll keep sharing enrollment numbers, but again, you have access to this one. This is just that yearly enrollment one, and, and every time that we're updating any new open enrollments that are going in, Brooke is updating this. So, if you look at that monthly one, under the enrollments, that's what, that's what this one is. So, that's it.
Moving on to seven point one, the approval of the August 20th meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to the agenda under business.
Board bills this month amount to $207,711.24.
The donation from Paulfield Studios and the Felton Fire Department, both of those were for summer rec. Looking for motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Go ahead, Scott.
Okay.
Motion by Scott, and second by Lindsay.
Yep.
No questions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point one, under policies, again, only the second reading for policy five or nine. Nine oh two, the addendum, nine oh five, five are being tabled until possibly 24th.
If we get a policy committee meeting scheduled, because I just don't want to do it until, we've had that chance.
We're going to table until October, or whatever the first meeting in October, because we won't have time, because Raleigh will be gone.
That's right.
Let's do that.
So, again, so nine point one is just the approval, the second reading of 509. Looking for a motion to approve the second reading.
So moved.
Motion by Raleigh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lindsay, or Amy, sorry. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Okay, nine point two, the non-certified contract for Allison Zimmerman, effective at the end of, at the beginning of this school year. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bobby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Nine point three, the certified contract for Betty Benson, speech. Do you want to share that story, or? Because I'm like, how do we get a speech person in? What's the step?
It's, it's, it's one of the reasons why Chelsea put out an email to all the district staff about all these positions that she's trying to fill. And, and I told her, I said, "Go ahead and do it, because you just never know how much word of mouth can actually work." We ended up having, the way that we found out about this Betty Benson is that Wanda Walseth was actually getting her hair done and talking to the hairdresser, whose next-door neighbor happened to be this girl who'd just moved recently. And so, kind of just fell into her lap, having a person who recently retired and moved, and so, lo and behold, we got a speech teacher. It's just one of those really bizarre things. Highly qualified person, just happened to move, so good lucked out on that.
So, looking for a motion to approve her contract.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point four, this is the, we're tabling this.
And this is the one to table. We don't have the contract yet. Dan Miller sent me an email late Friday afternoon saying that they, he'd forgotten about it. Well, basically, they were busy. So, they're going to get it to us this week, and then we can deal with it on 24th.
So, that is nine point four is tabled. We're looking at nine point five.
Yep.
Need a motion to table it?
Yeah.
Sorry. Looking for a motion.
Sorry, I have to talk. I'll make a motion to table that.
Okay.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Lane changes were in your board packet. Looking for a motion to approve the lane changes.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Bobby. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to nine point six, the non-certified contract for Penelope Dambay for service.
So moved.
Motion by Lindsay is our second.
Second.
Second by Amy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same time. Alright, ten point one, this is the contract change for Wanda Walseth, just increasing her time of it. So.
And I can explain that, as far as, so, when you look at these speech positions that we've hired, so you just hired a certified person, Betty, the one that we hired that you approved at meeting back in early August, was for a person that is, it's like the difference between an OT and having a Coda, where they're an assistant. So, that person that was hired can do the direct speech services, but cannot do the evaluations. So, what we need to do is have, the only availability we have then is, is to increase Wanda's time, so that we have somebody else that can help with the evaluations, and she's willing to do that. So, you're saving money on the one side, because you're getting someone who can't do the evaluations for, a little bit more economically speaking, that's why we have to increase the other on Walseth to point eight from point six. Make sense?
Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Scott, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Next, we will be going into a closed session, we'll be heading into the boardroom to discuss superintendent evaluation, and then when we return, we're just going to be talking as far as committees and on a journey. So.